All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of May 30th. We start our meetings at the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have Commissioner Tom Morello.
Allegiance salute flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made of its own liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. In the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, Leila Superintendent Henry, Allison Kowalski, Commissioner Coil, we have Commissioner Godu.
Good morning.
We have Commissioner Tom Morello in the audience as well, myself, and then on Zoom, we have Jason Smith. I see the sheriff who is with us, and I think that's it for now. I'm sure others will join us. Is there anybody else that I missed?
That's it.
Okay, I'm sure the capes states that we're trying to, so we're going to do our opening.
Yes, starting with the delegation wall removal, I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just open.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for the municipal building furniture and artwork.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposal and return with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for RC RNC flooring.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are on to the consent agenda for the 5/9/24 meeting.
I move to approve the May 9, 2024 public and non-public meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any additions or distractions to the minutes that anyone?
No, good.
Yeah.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we have the Markham Fiscal Year 2023 Audit Engagement Letter in our packet. Just for us to review, and we have the 5/30 accounts payable list.
With respect to accounts payable, I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes the May 30, 24 accounts payable list total of $3,617,042 and 66 cents.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion on the vote.
We had our state bill, which is 1.6 million, which makes up a good chunk of it, as well as a few other, you know, various other things. So just as we look at that with total, that one, our regularly scheduled programming.
So on the motion, Mr. Godu?
Chuck has produced a good quality summary of all these expenses, and I was able to look at it, and it all looks great.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Thank you so much for doing this. Just on a side note, having this breakdown that you do is just really, really helpful to show what's happening. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I know it really helps. And one thing too, even like annually, we usually have like one shot with deeds that there is like the book restoration project, and so 103,000 of that, so that project. So co-file this.
Yeah, the co-file is 100%. We had to get that 2,000 or 3,000.
Yeah, the answer, yes, to make it full, yes, yes.
But just thank you, really, I think for us, it's a nice picture.
Significant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping institute that, so thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
After commissioners' updates, anybody want to share anything?
All as well.
Yeah.
You have nothing? You have nothing?
I'm quiet today.
Okay. So I want to just take this moment. We had a resignation letter come in front of us last week. And with regret, I am reporting that Jason Smith will be leaving us unfortunately, but he has received a really good opportunity that he cannot turn down, and so his last day will be June 22nd. And so I will take a motion to accept his resignation letter with regret from the other commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
So, so all those in favor?
Accepted.
Wow, I just, you know, Superintendent, I thought, I thought we're doing the same thing. I just don't know if the end result will actually produce anything different.
Seems a little petty, don't you think?
And I just want to just say that I was really fortunate to come in roughly at the same time as Jason. So I've known him for three years, the ultimate professional. He goes above and beyond. I think he's really a one-of-a-kind person. I don't think you find people so dedicated as Jason. And really, really sad to see him go, but I'm really happy that he has an opportunity in the private sector where I think he's been really flourish and do really well, and I really, you know, sad to see him leave, but I'm really happy for his opportunity, and I wish him all the best. Christian, go ahead, dude.
Yeah, I would just like to also agree with Christian Chercello. Jason has been a stellar employee and has brought us from difficulty running this operation to five-star reviews and completely on no deficiencies in our operation. And it's with regret that we accept this resignation, and I also want to say that we tried everything we could to change his mind, but when you have a great opportunity to move forward, sometimes that's the right move, and unfortunately, we'll be on the search for somebody to come close to filling those shoes.
Well, the good news is in the work that Jason did, as in addition to the many employees that were already here, he has brought in a number of new people who have created a great team. And so operations, I have no doubt operations will continue successfully doing, you know, in large part in, or a part of the work that he has put in, so.
He's walking away, leaving us in good shape in general, so thank you.
So thank you, Jason. We'll see you for the next three weeks or so, but on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, commissioners. We're on to the appointment of the Deputy Treasurer.
I move to reappoint Robert J. Troy as Rockingham County Deputy Treasurer for the term of one year beginning June 1, 2024 pursuant to NHA RSA 2915 as recommended by the Rockingham County Treasurer.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have two points of discussion. One is that this is the same individual that we appointed last year. And second, thank you to Leila, who keeps us on track with all these things. Someone making sure we stay statutory compliant, Leila. I don't, we are grateful, because otherwise, you know.
Weakness.
Elon.
Further comment? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Under complete or reading card design selection.
Um.
I don't know if, especially since I had a chance to take a look at what Alison has provided us, the options.
I did. I thought they all looked good.
Yeah.
So.
So we need to check on, any suggestions?
I picked number two.
Let's go with number two then.
Okay, number two.
We'll get to it.
They were all, they were all, they were very nice. They were appropriate, simple.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I move to choose, I mean, I think, to approve attachment number two as the accounting brief.
Second.
Being seconded, motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. Travel and training request?
Move to approve a travel and training request for two human resources employees, AK and JH, to attend the 2024 Public Sector HR Association Annual Conference in Washington DC to be held September 3 through 7, 2024, at an estimated total cost of $6,248 as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any question on that motion?
I, it sounds like it's never been so late.
Really crucial. We've been, I joined as a membership, and it's a lot of great information because it's all county government stuff, which is really speaks to us.
Right, and especially some of the, you know, intended issues we see with CBA, you know, unions and public sector related issues, it's like that we're going to go.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. June Lunch and Learn Raffle.
I move to approve one raffle valued at approximately $200 for the June Lunch and Learn, utilizing Cigna Wellness Dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion on this one?
Another creative use of, oh, I'm sorry. I was told late last, when I came in this morning, that the Cigna information came over that they had not disclosed two items that they took funds from for us on, which they could do for maintenance and stuff. I spoke to Leila when I walked in, because I had just been told before I left, I'm hoping that the board will allow us to at least use the Wellness Rockingham County Funds for these two events, so we can still have it happen. But we couldn't use the Cigna, actually, we're over like $200 for the Cigna funds.
Okay, so do you have to reboard the motion?
It would be, yeah, probably to utilize the Rockingham County Cigna Wellness Funds. Otherwise, we can table it and just start off in July with something.
Revise the motion.
Yes, I move, so I move to approve one raffle prize valued at $200 for the June Lunch and Learn, utilizing, utilizing county wellness dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Spring Walking Challenge.
I move to approve a spring walking challenge wellness walking questionnaire activity and raffle prize drawing, utilizing Cigna, is it still Cigna? Oh, county, this is also county wellness dollars for four prizes valued at approximately $250 each, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just, so given that we're using the county wellness dollars, where are we in that one?
Well, we basically have a match from what Cigna does, so on that, I don't think we're anywhere near. Yeah. And it's an allocation, it's a budgetary thing, it's out of the health fund, and overall, the health fund does have substantial reserves.
Healthy. I try to draw against all of Cigna first and then hit small things with.
Great, I just, just for my point of reference, thank you.
Any more discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yeah.
I vote yes. So we're now looking at a request for the use of resident efforts funds.
I move to approve the utilization of the resident effort funds for a jazz concert to be held Sunday, August 18, as requested by the wife of a resident for a $1,000 donations as recommended by the resident council.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, I looked into who they were hiring and went on YouTube and listened to at least one piece that they had recorded at live at a radio station, and these two are outstanding musicians, and I'm sure it'll be appropriate, and everyone will love this concert.
Good.
And this was just the background. I mean, I think it's, live music is inspiring to everybody, so I love this idea. It's just invigorating, but this was, came from a donation, just so everybody in Zoomland knows or watching this. This came from a donation from a resident spouse, and specifically with the idea to use this for entertainment, and this seems like a great entertainment opportunity, so, you know, what a nice thing.
On the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. So, Department head updates. Now, Chuck Nickerson first.
Obviously, budgets, budgets, budgets. Just a reminder that next Wednesday evening, June 5, is the public hearing that the executive committee runs on their, their proposed budgets and delegation. If there's no changes to that budget that's being presented, that will be the budget and resolutions presented at the June 19 delegation meeting for passage of budget. Let's see, thank you for approving, or for, again, approving the AP list. I put in the engagement letter, that just follows along with the terms of the agreement that originally had with Melanson. And then Markham, if you remember, took over Melanson last January. Unfortunately, that has, you know, exacerbated kind of the delay in them doing some engagements for us. To which we do, we do have much outreach with the audit firm. I mean, if, if I could prepare the audit and have it deemed to be independent, they'd all be done in no time, but.
And it would be tight.
Yeah, so there actually was an after-hours event that Markham holds, usually hold like one in May, one in. So Markham usually holds one, like, one after-hours event in spring, one in the fall, and I make a point to go to both of those, too, because I get to talk directly to partners and audit staff that attend those meetings. And I got to actually talk to the person who's going to be our, our audit manager going forward, because they, up until the fiscal 23 audit, they hadn't actually transitioned us from our previous audit team, who have all gone on to doing profit audit instead of government. Because Markham made them choose.
Choose between.
If they're involved, they had to choose one of the, and I understand, because you have to keep up on both education requirements and trainings for two different sets of accounting pronouncements. So I understand I haven't been in the business way back when, so, so it's good to talk to that person, so I gave them a preview of things that, that she can look forward to, that we have going on here.
Oh, thank you for priming the pump.
Well, and she said that she'd be reaching out to the person who actually emailed us the engagement letter, and because that person's like the supervisor.
Yeah.
And they'll make sure that they get things moving right away, so.
Thank you.
Sometimes there is a sweet wheel effect. Sometimes it's better, better results than others, but it's not for lack of trying, on our side. We will be having, since we're almost to June, in early June, we'll have our, like, event, planning event as well. Again, the good news is that that resolution did change for the next year's budget, so there's no rush right now for departments to finalize their encumbrances. So, which I think is really good news, that, you know, we can really have that 100% certainty that you're encumbering, you know, fully well knowing, you shouldn't have any other expenditures happening in the lines for 6/30/24. So that was always, I know Andrew Menace and Monster Care especially, it was hard.
Yeah.
You know, because you don't know necessarily when things are going to arrive or not, you know, because we're still dealing with some lead time issues on different supply items or equipment and what have you.
Or even, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been tough. I mean, it was bad enough before COVID, with COVID, and we're still dealing with it.
Supply chain.
Yes, yeah, some of it, it's not as bad, but there's still some, some areas. I think they're dealing with it more so on private building related items, as far as really long lead times. At Resource did sign off on that interconnection agreement.
Right.
Oh.
And so we have the official notice to proceed that I re-sign off on, so revisions already been starting to do some work. Sorry if Jude's on or not. Jude can do some of the other, sorry Jude, you can do some of those updates, sorry. But, but there's really great progress going on across the road, and obviously, people seeing that they're working on the driveway now, too, so that's, that's good news. But revision has started mobilizing, doing stuff, and I think Peshat Construction's been doing some of the base and work back there to preparation. Wow, keep some, okay. But overall, you know, busy with, with grant stuff, again, we did select one of the, one of the two finalists, so fingers crossed that that person. Very, very pleased with the two finalists, though.
Great.
So, you know, really good, they, we even did a little test of the grant simulation, and they both did very well with it, so. So I'll stop there.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Superintendent Henry?
Sure. Currently, we have 150 in-house. Must have closer to 26 females out of different places. They were really on the rise. Yesterday, we had our divisional meeting, that went real well, a lot of good conversations, asked about how, how's appreciation week went. They said it's the best it's ever been, and they're on the right pathway, so they're very happy about that. A lot of good stuff going on there. They're happy with the contract going through, so right now, at least morale is, is very much up, which is, which is hard to do in jail, plus grave. We started with tours again. We had a school, high school come through and do a jail tour, that went very well, they're very looking out for other ones coming in, so we used to do a pre-COVID, come on in.
That's sort of like scared straight?
No, that program went away a long time ago.
No.
No.
I remember in high schools, like, going day of high school in criminal justice or.
Yeah, it was, it was a criminal justice high school class that came through.
Yeah.
Other interested, and three former staff members went through with them, plus other staff, and it worked very, very well.
Thanks.
So that's, that's, we're glad to have that back. Promotion ceremony happened yesterday for Corporal Casemiro to Sergeant Casemiro. That was, that was good. We're to have, be posting for some corporal openings. Again, some more movement for people. Very excited about that. And, oh, this summer, we talked, I talked to my staff, we are going to, at some point, either July or August, I haven't picked the date yet, do a open house for my staff's family to do tours for them. We'll open one empty units, bring out the toys for their families to see. We'll do a popcorn, maybe some sort of ice cream bar or something, start to bust in air, we'll do some photos, professional photos, maybe some photos, kids won't be inside of cells. But we're going to do that after summer and do our awards ceremony for us, that we had of Officer of the Year, Rookie of the Year, Supervisor of the Year, and this year, we're adding in a Nurse of the Year. We put them, they get their individual plaque, and they also want to put actual plaque in our place, so we will be doing that this summer, and staff's very excited, something we get back to doing.
There's one request, if you do the software, make sure you, you're not like leaning.
They put the hot, they put the Chuck site, I can't help it. That's all I have, thank you.
Allison?
Hey, I just want to remind everybody about the NHAC Awards. We don't want to be going up north and not having any awards for our county. So could you please notify me and let me know, you know, your selections, and I'll be a secondary on the submission on that. I just need you to get to me by the end of next week. Because they're locking it out, and they're not going to take any exceptions for late submissions, so I'd like our, we have great folks in our county, and we want to make sure we're representing them and having them come up for that event, that evening event. It's, you know, stay overnight and attend the awards night and be recognized with their fellow colleagues from other counties. It's a really special time.
Can you put the forms out, too?
It's online. It's online, so you have to go online and let me know, and then I go online.
I prefer to.
NHAC, so if you go onto the NHAC website, or let me know if you want to provide me information, I'll go on the NHAC website and complete all that information. I'm more than happy to do that. I just need to know who we're submitting for and the names. Secondly, we have our cooking class today, so if anybody, it's 12 to 12:45. If anyone needs a chocolate fix, please feel free to go down to the Hilton. There are some slots available for that. You'll have taste testing at the end, and it'll talk about how you can incorporate chocolate into your cooking and still be healthy. I don't know what that's about, but you're telling me that. So I also want to talk to you about open enrollment. As of 3:15 yesterday, we had 142 complete online enrollments. We have 39 in process, and we have 195 not even started. So I really need the ODDs and stuff to go out and walk through their departments, or push their supervisors, to get everybody to the kiosk for a computer and fill it out. It is really self-sufficient. It really is a nice platform. It's been enhanced quite a bit, and it's, it's really easy to use, so please make sure to do that. We don't want anybody being locked out and then having some issues, because we're really trying to do no exceptions.
Allison, can you remind everybody of the date for anyone watching?
So, and I'm really bad. Let me ask Julie the walk-in date on that, because she's in the control. I want to say, I will find out.
It is easy. It is easy.
Let me try, I will announce in a few more minutes.
Okay, well, we'll, we're going to tune back to you, because it's good that there are people, I am always amazed at how many people tune in later on on Zoomland to a meeting.
Yeah, I will make sure, I'll make sure that we have that, and I did ask for a walk-in later on, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go Jason Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. For this week, we're preparing for mock survey that continues, sorry, not mock survey, the real survey. We are also preparing for next week, a Medicare A audit from FSA as part of our compliance work plan for 2024. Resident, as you know, resident council wanted to have a musician group come in. Thank you for approving that. That's going to be really exciting. Can't wait to share the news with them, so that's, that's excellent. Also, today, we have our Celebration of Life at 10:30 AM in the atrium, so if anyone is available and would like to join us, please do so. And then we're continuing to monitor staffing hours and make reductions when needed, and I provided that in my board report for the week. And then I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for all your support over the three and a half years that I've been here. I, it's bittersweet to, to be leaving the county, as I built a lot of wonderful relationships and partnerships, and Commissioner Coil as my liaison for the entire time that I've been in my role. Thank you for your dedication and your support to long-term care services. I will truly miss everyone, but the position that has been presented aligns really closely with my future. So I thank you for allowing me to serve this population and being part of this community. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Can you go to the sheriff? Sarah?
Good morning.
Morning.
Nothing really new to report this week. We continue to be extremely busy. Hampton Beach is on fire with all the people up there, so trying to quell some big storms up there with all the senior skip days and stuff like that. Transport is extremely busy. We're doubling the numbers over there. That's about it. I just want to, something to Jason Smith. I've been here for six years, and I tell you, you've done a great job over that nursing home. The county's really proud of all the hard work that you've done up there, and you're definitely going to be missed. Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. June Gates?
Good morning, everyone. Oswald in Facilities Operations this week. We're also very busy. The wastewater team repaired mainly yesterday in the spray irrigation line going up North Road. It was a pretty, it was a pretty substantial repair, but they took care of it in-house. Jimmy Dills was on the backhoe and a couple of the guys down in the hole, so it went very well. I was pleased with that. And we're, we lost one day of spraying, which is nothing.
Wow.
Yeah, it was great.
Wow.
At the jail, we are following a, right now, a minor leak in a 10-inch copper line, so I'm trying to come up with a good plan on how to affect that repair. See how long the water's going to be down in the building. I mean, I've never even seen a 10-inch copper pipe. It's big.
I was just saying, minor, a 10-inch copper pipe is, doesn't sound minor.
Well, it's only dripping right now, so, but it is a line that's under pressure. It is a main line into the building, so we're trying to get a really good plan in place.
Great.
We'll make sure everybody has proper notice before we get in there. Palmer Sakad has come in and looked at it for us already, so we're on top of it. I just wanted to let you know that it's kind of like one of the irons we have in the fire right now. We're going to start haying at the lad farm this weekend. As you know, we're not allowed to hay up here until August 1st. So they picked a small piece in one of the upper fields. Make sure all the equipment is good, because they do, they rebuild everything through the winter, so they'll be knocking down a piece this weekend and getting it, getting it hayed. We're looking forward to it's kind of like a rite of passage in the spring. Once we start haying, it's summer, so guys are pretty excited to be getting back to work on that. Chuck mentioned the, the solar. It, it, it shouldn't go without being noted, Chuck worked really hard to get that insurance paperwork through. He's, he stayed right on top of them, and I think it's absolutely a tribute to his stick-to-it-iveness that we are going forward with it. They are mobilizing. DES granted a waiver for the sanitary protective area of our existing well number three, and they said that when they give us the permit for well number four, they will give us a waiver for that as well. That report, it's kind of gone back and forth a little bit, that report, is one of the, one of the four abiding properties that was. That report, just, it's kind of gone back and forth a little bit, that report, there's one of the, um, one of the four abiding properties that was minorly affected, and they just want to make sure that all of the potentialities of that are being addressed in the final report. But we're very, very close. And, um, other than that, all's well, we're keeping it moving.
Yes, thanks Jude, Superintendent.
Jude, just, Jude, just let us know, and just a heads up, if I can help with Evans and some crew picking up hay, just, we'll work that out.
Uh, you can help us out with Evans and his crew.
We will figure it out.
Yeah. I was gonna give you a call later on this morning, Jason, thank you.
But, like, this is again, yet another example of sort of the, the teamwork, departmental teamwork. I know I emphasize that, but it really is like a very unique phenomenon here that should not be understated.
Um, as a department head, it's really gratifying too, to be honest, I mean, I think we all feel really badly about Jason leaving, we've you know, established relationships with him, and we feel a genuine pride in his accomplishments because they're the county's accomplishments, so, you're right, Commissioner Coyle, it's, it's unusual.
Allison?
I did want to circle back for the insurance, June tenth at midnight, the system locks down. For any forms, such as for the buyout forms and evidence of insurability or stuff, those forms have to be in at four P M. on the tenth. So if you.
Not that far away.
Eleven days, people, come on, rally your troops, rally everybody. And it is no, important to note, I'm putting this out there too, because I have utilized it myself, which is it, when you're filling, going, you can go to the H R kiosk if you have any trouble in terms of how to navigate the platform online.
Very good, um, okay, uh, I think, I don't know who's on the phone, maybe someone from the public, I don't know.
Well.
Okay, okay, Kathy, I'm sorry, I can't see your, your photo, so, uh, I'm gonna let you speak now.
Yeah, pretty much, uh, uh, same, same as usual at, at the registry days, we did have a a nice seven million dollar cash deal over there in Lunandary for Woodmont Archards. Um, they're gonna be putting up some more, uh, apartments, and other than that, um, that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thanks Kathy, appreciate it, I'm gonna go to Leila.
Good morning.
If she's got anything for us.
I have nothing new to report, thank you.
Okay. All right, this is the time when I ask the public if they have anything that they, oh, hold on. Yeah, new business, old business.
So, we just did E now on F. Uh, I move to a walk-in exception, I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a finance office employee H E as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Been made and seconded, any discussion? Here are none, on the motion, Commissioner going to do?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Now, we're on, another comment, um, we have one member to follow, uh, actually Kathy, do you have something else to say? I see your hand is up.
No. No, I don't.
Just checking, um.
You guys are real good at keeping the secret, because I came here today on a rainy Thursday, did not know that my friend Jason Smith was going to resign. So when I go upstairs and I choke him, it won't work. When Jason was hired, I was part of, uh, Kevin, Commissioner Coyle and Commissioner St. James, we did a worldwide search, luckily we found him in New Hampshire, but he's become a friend, I'm absolutely shocked, because I talked to him both Saturday and Monday on the phone over the weekend, and he didn't say a thing to me, so uh, but he's not gonna keep a promise either, because he promised me that he would wait till I came back. And now that, so I'm not gonna press you with a promise, but Jason, uh, you kept this place safe, you kept this, this, all this facility. You walked in on a tough time with COVID and everything, and you're a friend and you're family to me, and I'm still gonna choke you when I go upstairs, but, uh, thank you for everything, Jason, this, you know, the county is gonna be it's a lot of work, because, you know, the other two Commissioners and I, we had to go find Jason with the worldwide search, but we got him in New Hampshire, it's a lot of work, so you three have a lot of work to find a replacement, you know, and I'm just hoping that Jason doesn't take anybody with him. He doesn't, he's not good at a promise, so I'm not gonna ask him. Jason, you've done it, you've done a tremendous job, you know, we, we talk about maybe one COVID case, and when our trouble was really COVID death, and you look across the state of New Hampshire and the other nine counties, and they had numbers and numbers that we didn't want, you, you really are, you're, you're a rock star, you're my friend.
Thank you, thank you, Tom, and I, I appreciate your words, and this team is prepped and ready, they're concerned for sure, but they know what needs to be done, they're skilled, and I'm proud of what they're gonna be doing, uh, moving forward. I prepped everybody and provided all the tools, and you've allowed me to do that, so thank you, um, and I'm going to miss everyone for sure.
Um, anybody else, I don't see anybody else from the public, so, um, I will, what do we have for non-publics?
We have a number, but why don't we start with, uh, D O C, since.
All right, so we're gonna go with the non-public, so I'm gonna take a motion.
I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one eight point three regarding personnel matters.
Both seconded, all those famous A I.
Aye, aye.
All right, we're going into non-public, everybody, thank you very much for your participation this week, appreciate all the work that you all do. Okay, we're coming out of non-public, and Commissioner Coyle has some motions to discuss.
So we had four non-public sessions, uh, with respect to the, um, first two, um, I'll go in order with, which we took them, they involved the Department of Corrections. And I move to seal those minutes indefinitely, because they adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of, well, actually, I'm gonna move to, uh, yeah, because they adversely affect the reputation of someone other than this board, and we don't have a um, firm date on when those things are gonna be completed.
Second, motion's been made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner going to do?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And the second two issues were, um, were H R related. And I move to seal those minutes indefinitely, because it could re, render a proposed action ineffective in both instances. And again, this is another instance of we don't have a firm date when this will, those actions can be finalized.
Motion to seal indefinitely the next two issues.
Second.
Seconded on the motion, Commissioner going to do?
Yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I move to adjourn.
Second, adjourn, all those, they would say aye, aye, we are adjourned.